All right, I call to order a meeting of the North Andover School Committee. Today is Monday, May 23rd, 2022, and I would ask that we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where worship stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if we could remain standing for just one moment, I'd like to have a moment of silence tonight for the recent passing of longtime instructional aide in North Andover, one of their first learning resource centers at the high school, Linda Downer. She worked many years up there, was devoted to our students, particularly helping students learn how to read, learn, help with reading who struggled. So a moment of silence for Linda Downer. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, before we go into public comment, we're just going to do a quick attendance here. So we'll start, Ms. Petrowski, in the room, we have Ms. Petrowski.
Yes.
Mr. Hicks, here.
Here.
Ms. Wietzke.
Remotely, we have Ms. Picard.
Yes.
Okay, we want to adjust the volume a little bit. Dr. Gilligan, would you like to introduce your team remotely and in person?
So we have our student reps here tonight. We have Ethan and Lindsay, I can see them. And then in person, we have Marcy Bakusi, the Executive Director of Special Education. We have Dr. Jim Mealy, the Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations. And I got a last minute call, Ms. Marx was able to get into an appointment that she's trying to schedule now for months, and she's not going to be with us tonight. She might be able to log in shortly, but as of right now, she will not be at the meeting, so.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, we'll begin with public comment. And Ms. Picard, the last I saw on the forum, there was no request for dial-ins. I assume no more came in?
I heard nothing further, thank you.
Okay, perfect. In person, public comment. So if you can state your name and address for the record, once you're no longer a student?
Yes.
Aiman O'Carroll, 29 Hawthorne Place. I just wanted to come in here today to say thank you very much to both Ethan and Lindsay at what I presume is their last meeting of the year. I'm here on behalf of both myself and Mika, and I wanted to say a very big thank you to you both because you've done an exceptional job this year. We've both been keeping tabs on you here and there, and really just very proud of you, and good luck in your next steps at your respective UMasses.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Aiman.
Other public comment? I think you're going to do recognition, right? Okay, perfect. All right, so we'll do recognition, if there's none others, right?
Yeah, great. Tonight, we have with us Bob Ford from the Rotary. North Andover's had a long relationship with the Rotary over the years, and Bob was in last year at one of our meetings to talk about briefly a little bit of the programming they have and some opportunities for our high school students.
Thank you, Dr. Gilligan and everyone. Yes, I'm with the North Andover Rotary Club. We have a very special program among a number of different programs that we pursue here in town. It's an international youth exchange program. We send students out to foreign countries to spend an entire year totally immersed in their life, their language, their culture, and they live with various host families, and they attend a local high school, and we reciprocate by receiving students in exchange. And I'm pleased that we are now, after a little hiatus because of COVID, we are now back in business, if you will, and we are prepared to send out a North Andover student. She'll be going out to Sweden, and again, she'll spend the entire year there. She doesn't come home for holidays, she doesn't come home for a school vacation, and we even tell the parents to, you know, take it easy, don't be reaching out as easy as it is. We want our students to be fully immersed and, you know, not distracted from, you know, getting acclimated to their new surroundings, their new host families. They live with usually three host families during the course of the year, and that's just to give them a little breadth of exposure. And similarly, we are, you know, doing the same. We have a young girl from Switzerland who will be coming here to North Andover. She'll be arriving toward the latter part of August. We don't have a set date right at the moment, and she will live with different host families here in town and attend North Andover High School. She should have no problem acclimating herself. She has already done this. She was born in Spain, and when she was seven years old, her family moved to Switzerland. So she's already moved from one culture and language to another, actually, from one culture and two languages to another culture and two languages. So she speaks Catalan and Spanish, she speaks German and Swiss German. She considers possibly the language that she is best in is English, which she has been studying since she's been knee-high to a grasshopper, I guess. And I understand she also has a little French under her belt, so she seems to have a certain facility for languages. And she's a good student, she plays volleyball, and, you know, among other activities, so she's, you know, just like any other girl that we have here in town, I am looking for host families, okay? This is one of my many jobs in this program, and ideally would be a family that has a girl attending North Andover High School, but that is not necessary. It is, what we are looking for first and foremost is a warm, welcoming family that will accept this girl into their household, make her a part of their family. The hosting, ideally with three host families, it's about, you know, give or take, it's about three and a half months. There's no set schedule for when the student will change from one family to the next. That's worked out between the families that are making the transition, but roughly three and a half months of hosting. Parents, you know, provide the boardroom and parental supervision, the same as with their own children, and we encourage the student to participate in, you know, club sports, whatever they're inclined to do. We want them to be, again, fully immersed in what we do here, see and experience what we do. This is an experiential program, educational and cultural, so it's not something that, you know, can be learned, you know, from reading books, which we have students doing. So it's a great opportunity, students develop independence, self-reliance, self-advocacy, they, you know, grow in maturity as a result of this experience. It's a fantastic addition to a student's application for college. I mean, imagine, most of the students go out junior year. Occasionally, we have students going out for a gap year, and less occasionally, we have students going up their sophomore year. But, you know, for a student who goes out before gap year to be able to come back and apply to college and say, I just spent the past year in Sweden, I just spent the past year in Bosnia or Herzegovina, Slovakia, or Colombia, or Ecuador, Brazil, whatever. We exchanged with a great number of different countries, and we have, Rotary's been doing this program for some 80 or 90 years. We're Rotarians, are volunteers. I'm here on my own time. We volunteer our time, we volunteer whatever skills, knowledge that we have, and we also volunteer some of our own money, but the program is not free. Students do have to pay for, you know, their travel, and there's insurance that they have to purchase, and, but the families provide the, you know, the boardroom, the housing and so on, some transportation, the same as, you know, we've all done with our own kids for, you know, different events here in town. They have the full support, well, let me just back up. Rotary does not get paid for doing this, host families do not get paid, the school does not get paid, because what we have found, looking at other programs, is that once you introduce money, you start developing some problems. There are a number of other different programs out there, some do charge, the organization, you know, charges a fee, they charge, you know, they pay the school, they pay the host families. We have seen, you know, the turd of problems that have occurred, you know, with some such programs, so we do not do that. And, you know, to, well, let me say that the program is a tremendous learning experience for a student who participates in the program. So whether it's our student going out to Sweden or the Swiss student coming in, it's, you know, their opportunities, you know, for growth are just exponential. But there's also benefit for families, because the family is now exposed to this student, to this foreign culture, especially is this beneficial? If the family has children who are still in the high school, still eligible to participate in the program, even families, we've had good exchanges with families that have kids in the middle school. And because now the family, parents as well as their own kids, see this exchange student in their own families, they see the challenges that are, you know, that are faced, getting acclimated, you know, being away from home, some homesickness, some more or less, maybe some difficulty with school, maybe some difficulty with the language, maybe some difficulty making friends. It's a lot to do, especially when you're doing it in a foreign language. So, but they get to see that, and they see that the student makes it, and what they also see is the support that Rotary provides. We are right here in town, our club, I am the Youth Exchange Officer for the Rotary Youth Exchange Program, Youth Exchange Officer for the North Andover Club. I also happen to be the District Chair now for Rotary District, which is Northeastern Massachusetts plus Salem, New Hampshire, and we have a fantastic team of people who work. Each student is given a, provided with, in addition to myself, as the YEO, Youth Exchange Officer, there's also a Rotarian counselor that the student has. So there's a support group for the student, there's a support group for the host family. And so I am hoping that some families and ladies and gentlemen out there in TV land, I hope that you are listening, and it is a great opportunity. I encourage people to get in touch with me. I will leave you with some, I have, actually, I have three different, I'll leave all three, multiple copies of all three little blurbs, if you will. I would love it if something could get into the school emailing bulletin newsletter, whatever you call it. My kids have been out of school for a long time, so I don't, it's a faded memory, but very short or one full page. This one here is just on the host families, just tell them a little bit about it. They have websites that I've included on here, and also my name and contact information. Ladies and gentlemen, there is no commitment to contact me and just speak to me and get information. I will not twist your arms, because if I have to twist your arm to become a host family, I don't want you for a host family, okay? I want you to see the benefit of this program for yourself, for your own families, and for the student who's coming here. I thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Yeah, we'll just see if there's any quick questions, but we'll take those materials and we'll get them at the dial-ins, if that's okay, and then we'll distribute them out, make them available. Any questions, Ms. Picard, remotely?
I don't have any questions, but I would say that one of my best buddies in high school was an exchange student from Sweden, and after high school, I went over and spent January in Sweden, which there are probably nicer months, but it was a great experience for me. We hosted an exchange student from Spain. I ended up majoring in Spanish and taking kids to Spain and spent some time in some other countries as well, and my niece was an exchange student to Switzerland. So I'm happy to share any of those experiences with the community, and I'm so pleased that Rotary is doing this work. And I've talked to some of your students who have come back and had such a wonderful experience, so thank you for continuing to bring this to our attention.
Thank you.
Ms. Wietzke?
Thank you.
Mr. Hicks?
No questions.
Ms. Petrowski?
Nope, no questions. What a great opportunity, though. I wish that I had a bigger house, I would love to host, but I don't have enough, I barely have enough room for us.
I'm trying to, I'm excited about getting rid of one in the fall, so.
So you have an empty bed, is that what you're saying?
I'm going to enjoy it for a year first.
No arm twisting.
Next year. So my only quick question is, obviously, you know, not all countries have, you know, the high school grades, you know, freshman, sophomores, but, you know, usually there's, you know, like whatever, there's 13th or, you know. So how does it compare out, like what's eligible for our students to go there and what age groups are coming back? Is it typically just the high school years?
The Rotary has an age group, 15 to 18.
15 to 18.
15, there are, there are a few, very few countries that will actually accept a 19-year-old, if a kid is on the older side. For the most part, not, the student has aged out. If the student is 18 years, six months, and a day, you know, on the day of departing here in August to go out on exchange, okay? And they need to be at least 15 years old coming in, you know, going out on exchange.
Okay, awesome. Good to know. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. If you want to leave that with Dr. Mealy.
Yeah, I think you did, yes. All right, we will, we're going to quickly move on to consent items, which is minutes from May 9th and May 17th. So we can do these together or separately. I think we're all in attendance at both of them, so is our motion?
A move that we accept the minutes is printed in the packet from May 9th and May 17th.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Ms. Picard, seconded by Ms. Petrowski. Any edits, comments, corrections? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll call a roll call vote. Ms. Picard?
Yes.
Ms. Wietzke?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Ms. Petrowski?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. We have minutes 5:00 from the 9th and the 17th. Moving on to our students, Lindsay and Ethan. This is the final, you've got to hurry up, you're going to miss the sunset. I think that's, that's about to go on. That senior sunset tonight?
Yeah, it is. Sorry, I'm sorry, I just.
As she hangs in her home, yeah, it is.
I would like to start off with announcing that Asia Night was a successful event held last Friday with guest speaker Representative Trinh Nguyen, coconut dancers from UMass Lowell Casa, and student speakers Anu Sahu, Sung Hwan Chin, Christina Choi, Beth Lane, and I, in celebration of Asian American Pacific Islanders Heritage Month. In total, the former name Asian Pacific Islanders Club, now newly Asian Student Association, going back to its roots, have made a profit of $135 from Asia Night, which will be donated or put into an event for the next year. Tomorrow, the Race Emy Club will be holding a cultural film festival after school, and we'll be serving ice cream, so if you want to immerse yourself in other cultures while grabbing a cold treat, head on over to Room 1036 after school. The North Andover Track is holding their eighth annual matches fundraiser. I know my bed broke pretty recently, and those are the matches I need, it looks pretty enticing. All sizes are available, 25-plus styles on display, all payment accepted, and best of all, delivery is free. If you're not taking this chance now, you'll be losing a great one. Email Bill Nash at BillNash@CFSBeds.com to learn more and help out the track program while you're at it. I would like to announce that Jenna Bard made headlines and is writing record books while dominating shot put, discus, and javelin, all the while being an amazing and talented singer in the NA Music Program. And I believe just an hour ago, the boys volleyball held their senior night, and the gym, congratulations, Gabe, Andrew, and Andrew and Sam. And I'll hand it off to you, Ethan.
Thank you. So last Thursday, there was the last big band concert of the year. If you missed out, don't worry about that, because both band and chorus will be playing slash singing at graduation. Speaking of chorus, there is the last big chorus concert of the year this Thursday night at 7 o'clock in the auditorium at the high school. We'll have pieces we used for our competition back in March and April, as well as new pieces, so there should be something for everyone hopefully to enjoy at the concert. Of course, another big piece of news, this is the seniors' last week of school. To any seniors watching, please return any textbooks, library books, or borrowed materials from the school that you have yet to return. Sign up for SOS Night and check your email frequently for any last-minute things you need to do. In addition, tonight, the class of 2023 is holding a fundraiser at Jade in North Andover, where some of the money paid for takeout or dine-in between 5:00 and 8:00 tonight will be donated to the class if you tell them you are there to support the class. So if you want to help support the class, I would guess going right now is probably the best thing to do. In addition, J&amp;HYC Inc. Scholarship Night happened at the Stevens Estate, and they recognized eight of our seniors with college scholarships. Congratulations to those eight seniors who unfortunately, we don't have the names of right now.
I'm going to interrupt you, I've got the names. It's Michaela, Joslyn, David, Emma, Ella, Matt, Paige, and Ty. So congratulations, I know we announced this before. On with that, the Desi Club, founded this year, is making strides with their Desi Festival this Friday from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. They will have games, food, activities, dance shows, photo booths, and much more. They will have henna and raffle available for $5. Please show up and show your support for our Desi Club and embrace Desi culture.
In addition, the last big coffeehouse of this school year will be happening on June 10th. Please check the NASPires social media as we get closer to that date, especially the Instagram, in order to learn how to sign up to perform or volunteer. Also happening right now is one of the senior events, which is Water Wars, which is exactly what it sounds like, you get in teams of four and go around North Andover fighting each other with water guns. And so I've heard from a lot of students which teams they're on, a lot of students are participating, and many of them are wary of leaving the house without a water gun for defense, but hopefully that will become less of a problem as we get closer to graduation, which will be the end of Water Wars. Finally, tomorrow's senior event is the Senior Sunrise. Seniors can ride between 5:15 and 7:35 a.m. at the high school parking lot in Turf. There'll be bagels and donuts being catered at 6:30, but you are encouraged to bring food for others as well, and it is also decision day tomorrow. So remember to wear merch representing your next step, whether it's college or a place of employment or anything like that. And just one more reminder that Water Wars isn't permitted during senior events, and it's not permitted on school grounds between, I believe, 6:30 and 9:00. So please do not try to get your target, we want it to be a more peaceful event, not so much chaotic, and that will be all we have for tonight. Are there any questions?
I like the ad there, war and peace, but, all right, we'll start with some quick questions, if Ms. Picard has any.
I don't have any questions, but I do know that the spring concert for band was online still, so if people missed it and they want to watch it, it's available on the North Andover Music Association Facebook page, it may be available other places. Thank you guys so much for all that you've done.
Ms. Wietzke?
No questions, thank you.
Mr. Hicks?
No questions, but Ethan and Lindsay, best of luck to you in your next, in your future choices, and to all the other seniors as they celebrate the end of the year and graduate next week.
Ms. Petrowski?
No questions, thank you. Good job, guys.
Just again, thank you on behalf of the school committee and the community. Really appreciate everything you guys have done, and it's comforting for me to know that Aiman has had you under his watchful eye for the year, even came here to watch how it came off in person, so. And I know that you guys will be back, I think you're going to kind of pass the torch at the next meeting to our new representative, so even though you'll be alums, I think at that point, we appreciate you coming back, so thank you very much. All right. You're free to stay, or you're free to go to high school sunset, or?
Thank you.
All right.
I'll be off now.
All right. Dr. Gilligan?
All right, cue the Vex Robotics team. I think we had to shut the door so we could hear ourselves, the Vex Robotics team was pretty excited. I'm really excited to see your robotic. All right, folks, so, well, Vex Robotics is coming in. I want to tell you a little bit about them, they have a couple things to set up. What I would say to the team is if you do speak, please use the microphone so the folks at home can hear you, and I welcome you here tonight along with Mr. Mike Motherway. Great to have you here, Mr. Motherway. Several of these members have been together since middle school. I don't know if anyone recalls, but back several years ago in middle school, these guys went to the middle school Vex Worlds, which was a first for North Andover. This year, they won the design award at two separate competitions. To make a long story short, because I don't want to tell their whole story, they ended up at the Vex World Championships in Dallas, and just a remarkable job. We'll let them kind of tell the story tonight, but I'd like to welcome Keenan Goslin, Jonathan Hales, Zoe Levin, Luke Ralph, Dan Middleman, and our.
Andrew Schrader.
And New, thank you, I got that, I always, I struggle with that, sorry about that. And Carol Lynn, so, Spinosa, so, welcome tonight, and is there anyone I missed? All right, Dynamite, all right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much for having us. So I guess we can start talking about just the club in general. So the league we compete in is called Vex Robotics. Every year, they come out with a new game. It's all played with standardized parts, but we can manipulate them in pretty much any way that we want. It's all played on a field, and we have game elements that we need to figure out a way to design parts around to move in certain ways, and this year, the game was called Tipping Point. And so we have kind of like, these are the game elements that we have to use, and this was kind of the bot that we came up with. Throughout the year, we use, like, we come up with many, many different iterations, and we use a bunch of different ways of solving problems and coming up with new designs, and this is kind of what we ended up with by the end of the year.
Yeah, we went through multiple designer iterations to get this, and we spent countless hours trying to perfect our robot to make sure it works as intended.
We can go through a quick demonstration of how it works, I think, if Luke wants to drive it through. So we have two lifts, a four-bar on the front of the bot, an intake for the ring game elements, and a six-bar lift on the back, both using distance sensors.
So do you want to put it on the ground? Is that like, okay, all right, so if you want, if you need to move any of the tables or chairs, go right ahead.
That would be helpful.
I don't want to see that thing fall, because.
Is the cord going to be in the way?
Yeah, demonstrate in the front.
It's probably coded to navigate around the cord.
Attack you.
Can you move it back so we can see at home?
I think we're going to see if we can.
Oh, no, they changed the camera angle, we'll see what happens.
Okay, so this year, we have kind of the bigger goals on the bottom, we call them the mobile goals, and then we have the rings on top. There were also two separate platforms on each of the field, which you can elevate the mobile goals, and you can also elevate your robot by driving up it. So it gets to be a little bit of, you know, a tipping point, as they call it, when you get the bot up on top and you have all of these different game elements up there. And so we tried to design our bot around being able to do everything, so we can lift up the mobile goals on both sides, we can put the rings on to the mobile goals in a very consistent manner, which we really tried to focus on for this iteration of our bot, and getting the rings on the posts is worth more points than getting the rings just in the, like, bucket of the mobile goal itself, and so we really tried to be consistent with our design there, and it ended up working out pretty well, as you can see. Okay, so, so as we kind of go through our year, we have a couple of qualifying competitions. This year, as Mr. Gilligan said, we won design award at both competitions that we went to, and those both individually qualify us for the regional competition, which is made up of the best 80 or so teams from Massachusetts, Connecticut, and Rhode Island. from, uh, Massachusetts, Connecticut, and Rhode Island. Um, and we ended up, uh, competing there with a completely different robot. Uh, and we won, uh, what's called the Think Award for, uh, programming, which Danny can definitely talk, best programming, which Danny can definitely talk more about. Um, and that was, what, April? Uh, around April, uh, early April and it March, early, yeah. Uh, and we had about eight weeks, uh, to completely rebuild our bot, which is what we decided to do. And this is kind of what we ended up with. So it was definitely a grind. We had a lot of things to get done and it was a lot of work, countless hours after school. We were at school until eight, nine, ten a couple of times. Um, but it was definitely worth it and we ended up doing really well at Worlds and we got the judges' award, which is based off of, uh, an interview that you do with the judges there and they rate your design process, your bot, uh, your ability to, uh, like, act, well, yeah, actually do well in the competition, but also communicate your design to them. Uh, and they ended up liking us, and so we got the award, which was the first time any school, or any team from our school has gotten an award at Worlds.
Uh, to win this award, we had two interviews. One of them was a remote and then the other one was in person. And to get the second interview, we had to do well in the first one. And so we had the first one in April. And that was when the spot was, uh, semi-complete. And then the second one, we really got to showcase, uh, more that we had to offer.
I was gonna add, the judges' award is only given to one team out of the eighty that were in our division. So, uh, that was a cool thing. And then, uh, programming wise, um, we definitely, like, used a lot of advanced things. You probably only learned it like your third or fourth year of college. Well, I won't get into all the details, but we coded like a GPS sort of system so the robot knows exactly where it is. And we used like a PID controller. I won't get into all the details. But like, we coded a lot of stuff from scratch, uh, which taught a lot about programming. And skills that, you know, carry over into like AP computer science or like college computer science classes. So, yeah, oh, also, uh, we did get best programming. That was the Think Award.
That was what we, all right.
We got
The award we won at regionals to qualify us for Worlds was called the Think Award, and that was basically best program.
And only one team in all of Southern New England won that as well.
Amazing.
That's kind of like the main element of this club is that you get, like, we get parts, we get metal, um, and motors and everything. But everything after that all comes from us. We get to cut it, we get to reshape it however we want. We get to, like, utilize, uh, we only get a limited number of motors, so we really need to be efficient with how we use them. Um, and it really comes down to whatever we can do with it, whether it's building the code from scratch. Everything on this, like, came from our heads essentially. And so we document our whole process and eventually we come up with what we think was pretty successful design.
Throughout the year, we, uh, maybe had a engineering notebook that was over a hundred and seventy pages where we documented the entire process of building, coding, and designing our robot. And that's how we won the two design awards that you heard about earlier. Um, and so throughout the process of building every single design iteration, we documented that within the notebook.
You guys got any questions?
We, we may. Ms. Picard, any questions? We'll start virtually.
I was gonna ask about the engineering notebook, but you threw it in. Um, so my, I guess my only question would be, you're a large group. Um, and I wonder, are, are miss groups as large and what did you feel was the benefit of, um, of having the large group? Um, and you're communicating so well. I'm so impressed with that. So I'm just, I'm just curious about the group size.
Well, first off, thank you. Um, we tend to have a small group compared to a lot of other teams. Um, for example, in Hawkington, they limit their groups to a minimum of six people. But we find that to be a little bit large for us. So we tend to keep it a lot smaller.
Important to mention, uh, Newstry and Carolyn, uh, joined the team after their bot, uh, did not qualify for Worlds, but they were really help No, no, all right. They were really helpful in our, uh, whole packaging process. They helped us build, uh, extra parts for just in case anything got damaged in shipping, and they basically coordinated the entire, um, shipping process so we could get the bots down to Texas. Yeah, they, without them
So while, while we were focusing on kind of the actual robot aspect of it, they were, uh, like, a huge help. They were actually very essential in, in the process and they allowed us to really focus on what we needed to do and, like
Yeah, round of applause to them.
They really did a lot. They ended up rebuilding like half of the bot and had it all packaged up. They read the TSA guidelines. They made sure that we knew what we could bring, what we couldn't bring.
But yet, our bike pump was not able to go through it.
Yeah, we were on a team together. We got to regionals as well, but our robot wasn't the greatest.
It wasn't bad, though.
No, it wasn't bad.
Wasn't bad.
Um, but yeah, and then these guys let us kind of join their team, which was great. I mean, because we're both seniors as well. So we really wanted to be able to go to Worlds in our last year. Yeah.
So I guess you have to clarify that, uh, for most of the year, we were a team of five.
Yeah.
Just like, because you have to, sorry, just because you have to bet team sizes, for most of the year, we were a team of five and they were a team of three. And I'd say most teams tend to vary around five-ish. So that's the typical team size you'd see if you came into the lab.
But once it gets around five or more, it's kind of difficult to work on the robot all at once because there's too many hands and because the robot has to fit an eighteen inch cube sizing, uh, sizing cube, it's a little difficult to have multiple people all jumbled around this one object.
Definitely too many cooks in the kitchen is a valid phrase here.
Yeah, and so
Thank you so much. That's a, that's a great answer. And, um, I just, by a show of hands, how many of you are going on to study steam, um, at the next level?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
And just for the record, um, so Dan, Anusri, and Carolyn are graduating this year, but me, Luke, Zoe, and Keenan are juniors.
Oh, yee-haw. We'll see you again next year.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
Dan and Anusri, did I read that you're both going to Georgia Tech?
Yeah.
And want to make a special announcement, too? They're the valedictorian and salutatorian.
That was very confusing. Thank you.
I'm gonna have to strike that from the superintendent's floor. That one really is.
Uh, any other questions?
Yeah.
I, I think we do. Ms. Viti?
So you said you don't like groups larger than five. Are there a lot more students who try out and you winnow it down, or do you just create more teams?
Oh, so, um, uh, the way it works is we have a, a, a bunch of brains, um, graciously.
Robot brains.
Robot brains, so
That's the thing that controls the robot.
So all the electronics. So there's actually, I think there was eight North Andover teams this year, and then basically they all work individually on their own bots. Um, and then it's whoever makes it to the next round makes it to the next round.
Yeah, so there's normally about like eight to ten teams from North Andover that will end up competing and then only a certain amount go on to the next level from there. Um, and this year, we had a little bit less than normal just because of COVID, uh, but I think next year it'll definitely be better. And we're gonna focus really not only on ourselves, but also trying to make sure that everyone else can compete at the highest level possible, uh, just to try to really encourage and foster a good environment, uh, at the club.
And just for reference, team sizes are normally four people.
Okay.
Yeah, and also the teams, like, usually how we, like, set them up is it's mostly, we just kind of stick with whoever we worked with last year. Like, uh, and like, and there's also a class. So a lot of the teams are formed in the class with like who you're friends with and stuff like that. We have been on a team since freshman year and then they've been on a team since middle school. So.
Anybody can join, by the way. So it's not like a whittled down thing with like, oh, if you don't measure up, we're gonna, like, anybody can join and then stay.
Yeah, no triads.
Everyone join next year.
We definitely want more females also involved because once the seniors let leave, I'll be the only one left. So if anyone's watching, please join.
And then to go to the next level, you, you mentioned a couple of times you won this award to go to this level, this award. Do you have to win an award to go to the next level or place?
So you don't actually have to win an award. There's also a part of Vex called the Skills Challenge. Um, and it's basically you alone on the field. The normal competition is, uh, you get paired up and it's two V two. But for this, you get a minute to score as many points as possible. And you can advance not only to regionals, but also to Worlds based on that. And so we actually, if we hadn't received an award at regionals, we would have qualified based on our skills as well. So we were a hundred and seventy-fifth in the world out of twenty thousand teams.
Wow.
Whoa.
And number eight in New England, or Southern New England, sorry.
That's incredible. And then what does eight, five, six, eight, A stand for?
Oh, so eight, five, six, eight is just, uh, the North Andover Knights, uh, it's just the number we're registered as, sort of like a license plate. And then the A, we were just the A team this year.
Nice.
So each team that registers has a different letter at the end. So there's A, B, C, et cetera.
I find this fascinating. So thank you for coming.
Keep them coming.
Um, so this robot is different than the one that you built and competed with at regionals. What was the biggest change you made between the two and why?
Okay, so actually, Luke, you talk about the building changes.
Yeah, so I would say the biggest building change is we added a second lift off of the back here. So we can lift two of the mobile goals simultaneously. So we don't have to drop it, spin around, uh, to lift it up onto the seesaws that are in the corners. Yeah.
Uh, and also, uh, this was tilted, like, the angle is different on our robot. Okay, programming wise, oh, a lot of changes, a lot of changes. Okay. So originally, we used this thing called a PID controller, which is like pretty basic. It's like among the top teams, what you'll see most commonly. So we thought, what if we do even more programming, where we brought in a thing called
Proportional integral derivative.
Proportional integral derivative calculus, right? You use math. We don't just guess.
Never thought you'd use it in the real world, but we do.
We do use calculus. Um, and then I guess we use trigonometry to do odometry, which is like a GPS type thing, so the robot knows. I am Oh, you want to show the wheels?
Essentially, we have, uh, three sets of tracking wheels on the bottom of our robot that are all elastic into the ground. So that way, they actually rotate correctly, uh, and two of them are oriented forward, one's oriented sideways. And it allows us to basically track our robot, uh, on a bunch of arcs throughout the field. And so we know where it is, uh, each, like, at wherever it is. Uh, and we can also use the third wheel to determine, uh, the angle that it's pointed at.
And so all of that combined, uh, it's, it's more used for programming. So basically, instead of just having to go turn forward, turn forward, we can actually move on curves and a lot We didn't, we had some issues with it by the end, but, um,
It worked by the end.
No, it did, uh, the pure pursuit did, yeah, yeah.
The curve thing is something else. So the curve thing is called motion profiling, uh, where like the robot calculates the wheel velocities needs ahead of time. And then pure pursuit is like make it follow those velocities perfectly. So we tried bringing that in, which required like object-oriented programming, a bunch of programming stuff, just a lot of C++ and like going, oh, I wonder if I can save something to an S D card, like, just a lot.
There's a lot of lines of code, I think, ended up being what?
I don't know how many lines, because I'm not gonna count that many.
Yeah, a few thousand.
Yeah, maybe that might be a low estimate, but just a lot.
Each night at the competition, either in someone's hotel room or in the hotel lobby, we put, we put foam tiles down and made a miniature field. We had the robot going and then field elements and the computer and the music playing and pizza. It, it was a lot in one room, but it was fun.
Um, the, uh, three days before the, the world competition, we were having issues with our motor for our six bar. And, uh, we realized there was a tensioning issue on the joints of the six bar, but initially we thought, um, we, we were, we went through three motors in like three days and basically just burned them completely out. So we were really stressing. And then to make it the next thirty days and do as well as we did, I think was a shock for everyone, so.
We, we put ourselves in a little bit of a time crunch, having only eight weeks to try to build this entire thing, uh, but it turned out pretty well.
It's remarkable and I, the, the one thing I think I've learned from you all tonight, um, is that you care, you care, evidently you, it's evident you care very, very deeply and are very passionate about this and that, that is something really important that we should all take to whatever project it is that we, we do in life is to care very deeply about, because when you do that, you have great success. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Um, I just have a couple of questions. And first, I want to just congratulate you, your collaboration, your innovation, your energy, your organization together is really special and unique and you can just feel it as you guys are talking and it's so awesome. Um, if you haven't been to one of the robotics competitions, everyone should go. I've been, I went a couple of years ago. My son was on one of the teams and it is, I had no idea what to expect and I walked in and it was so exciting. Like, oh my God, pick it up, pick it up, pick it up, right? Like, the time's running out. So, um, so my question to you is, what advice would you give to younger students who are considering this but not sure if this is something that they want to do? Um, and then I guess this is kind of like a whole, like, district question is, can we bring this presentation to the middle school? Um, and/or the elementary schools, because you're right, we need, and we especially need more girls involved. And you guys, I, if they, if you brought this kind of energy to the middle school and elementary schools, I can't imagine that you wouldn't have a line out the door of students wanting to join. And, like, we need that, right? Like, this is such an amazing opportunity, so.
I mean, really what, like, allowed us to have this success that we have is the fact that we've been able to be together and we have this cohesion and this ability to work together, and it's allowed us to really, like, propel ourselves. And all because we were able to join this club as sixth graders, seventh graders and do well then, uh, but build a foundation upon it. So then even when we miss a year due to COVID or anything, we're still able to come back and do really well. Um, November nineteenth, if anyone was wondering, is when the, uh, robotics competition will be in North Andover. So definitely come check it out. But there are classes at the high school. There are lots of things you can do. There's no expectation for you to do, like, anything that you don't want to. It's supposed to be fun, um, and like, just have a good time with it, but please come check it out because it is a really, really cool opportunity and a lot of fun and the success that you can get from it is really rewarding.
Me and Anusri will probably be emceeing that competition. So if that's any
I think also, like, in terms of marketing to, like, younger schools, we did have a middle school team. I don't, I don't think it's running anymore. Um, the coach who, it, who was running it graduated, um, or his son graduated. He didn't graduate. Um, and then I think there was also the, at least I got my start in robotics in North Andover in the Lego Mindstorms program at, with Mr. Cushing at Kittredge. Um, so that, that definitely built like that sort of interest. And I think if we were able to generate that interest across the schools, we'd grow the program.
Yeah, I definitely recommend for anyone who's interested to take the class with Mr. Motherway. There's a lot of beginner courses as well as the CP and honors level course. And those are good because you can get an introduction without having to commit time after school if you have sports or any other extra regular, uh, club. But, um, Anusri and Carolyn can add on to that.
And just for reference for any eighth graders, we are planning a preseason meeting to talk to them about joining robotics next year.
Yeah.
So look out for that, uh, probably at the middle school.
Great.
And does it meet after school too?
Like, you mentioned sports. That was one of my questions. If you do sports, can you also do robotics?
So we, uh, try to commit as much time as possible. Like, if, uh, if you ever want to find us, lunch breaks are normally a good time to go to Mr. Motherway's room. We'll get about fifteen, ten minutes in. Um, but really, we just try to squeeze in as much time as we can because we all have a lot of after-school stuff. Um, but for anyone who was wondering about that with joining the clubs, any time that you put in after school is completely optional. We meet, uh, Tuesdays and Thursdays. Um, and we, of, like, we've obviously stayed much later than a lot of teams do, but it pretty much goes it pretty much goes till about four thirty until it gets like heavy competition season. And then Mr. Motherway will graciously let us stay until five, six, seven on, maybe on some other days.
Mr. Motherway isn't even the limiting factor.
By a competition. And I saw lights on about midnight and I drove over there on a Friday night.
We, we were, we were kicked out by the janitors, nor, more than one, more than once. Twice. I think it was twice, yeah. Yeah, yeah, there was two times. It's okay. You lose time, like, track of time. You're just working and suddenly it's eleven thirty and then they come in and they're like, you gotta get out, so.
But usually the week before a competition, we meet every day after school for two and a half to sometimes seven hours.
But really, whatever you can put in, if you're like considering joining, it could just be class time and you can still do very well there. Uh, but if you want to do after school, if you enjoy it, if you're like feeling good about what you're making, then it's very much so worth it, but completely optional.
Awesome. Uh, congratulations, uh, to all of you. A couple of quick things. Um, I, I think a couple of my questions were actually, uh, asked already by other committee members. But, um, when you go to the different competitions, obviously you're competing. But are there opportunities for you to, like, learn how somebody else's robot has done something, right? I mean, like, it's great if, like, you just see what they've done, but like, what are the education sessions where you kind of then go like, hey, how did you do that? Like, and I mean, is that just happened in the hotel lobby or is that like, you know?
Secret meetings.
Yeah, I'll give you two slices of roni if you're ready. Seven lines of code, right?
A good example of this, I think, was our robot from, because, so we had a robot that was fairly similar to theirs, like, early season. Um, just kind of like the general, like, two mobile goal lifts and an intake. But after going to, was it the second competi, first or second?
First competition.
First competition, we saw, um, a different opportunity in the competition. There's, so there's other mobile goals that are different heights and there's one that has a really high branch. Um, and the rings on there are worth ten points. So after, we, I think we, was there a robot there that was doing it? Yeah, we saw a robot there that was going for those rings instead and we thought, that's, like, there's only like one or two robots that are actually doing that. So we figured we'd go for that instead, because that's like, you can get eighty points and that's like worth two of those mobile goals. Because that's like, you can get eighty points, and that's like worth two of those mobile goals on the platform. So then we, when we came back after the competition, we rebuilt our whole robot based on that idea instead.
Uh, there's also a heavy amount of like online sharing, um, but also at the competitions, because it is, uh, like a team sport, uh, it ends up being like two V two. So you are allied with a partner each time, and so you can look at them, you can learn what their bot's doing. And kind of like learn.
Completely random alliances, so anyone from the competition. So we've been paired, we actually were, at Worlds, we were paired with Australians, and they are the cool, like way cooler than us.
Also. I'm sure you're speaking for yourself, Jonathan, not your teammates, right?
But also on the programming side, so like at our regional competition, right? Um, in the first fifteen seconds, the robot goes by itself, right? Um, okay, this is going to seem outside. You know in dodgeball, when everyone like rushes to the middle to get balls on the side? So it's kind of like this year, you have to rush to the middle to get these goals first. And normally, our robot would get there first. But there was one team that like, their robot did this like weird movement, and they beat us there. So after the match, I came up to them, I was like, how'd you do that? Right, so I asked, I talked to their programmer, and they explained to me, yeah, it's called pure pursuit, you go on a curve, and that's what we tried to do for Worlds. So there's, and then ironically, someone else came up to me afterward, like, hey, how'd you do your thing? And I explained to them, oh, you use a PID controller. And they gave me a floppy disk.
Yeah.
There's a really, there's a really nice community and like just sharing environment that there is. Um, and it, it allows for like ideas to spread and become better, and everyone's better off because of it.
Yeah, there's a team from Lexington, and they are one of the top teams in the entire world. And they're very skilled, so we see them in a lot of competitions. I want to talk to them, see how they're so successful. And we have a couple of teams that we've known throughout the years that we've competed with. And so we'll always message to them on Instagram or, or iMessage to kind of learn how we can improve and how they can improve as well. Because people are generally pretty open and like to learn from each other, so it works out well.
There was also a team that asked if we wanted, um, a floppy disk. I know it seems a little outdated, but, but, uh, they, they offered to make us a floppy disk of our regionals code, and so we actually still have that. And it was really nice to see them, like, we basically just.
We have no clue how to use it. We have no idea.
It just sits there.
It looks cool. It's like a piece of decoration.
I think, I think they're coasters now or something.
I would, I would definitely say the VEX community, it's, it's very, it's not like a toxic, cutthroat, any kind of like, oh, we're keeping our design secret. Like, actually, I think a really popular thing is called a, a reveal video. So two weeks out, three weeks out before a competition, um, teams will do this really cool like video reveal of their entire bot. And I think it's more about showing, it's not showing off, but like basically like, oh, this was our approach, blah, 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 this is how we score. And, um, it's really important for Worlds, so that teams can get to know who you are, because you need to sort of have that marketing, the, uh, there's a, after the qualifying matches, um, there's a playoff period, and you basically get picked by the top teams. So you have to get your bot out there and basically have everyone know who you are to get to that level.
Deca.
Exactly.
Deca all day long.
I was just going to say, uh, one second, Ms. Picard. Um, I think the last time we had the team come and actually, um, kind of bring the, the robot, I can call it the robot, right?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Uh, I don't want to offend it.
It's Kevin, actually.
That it came, it, it was, it was awesome, it was successful. One of the things that I liked most about it was, and Holly and Helen might have been here, um, but it pelted the chair, David Terese, with Nerf balls, um, the whole time. This, this is way cooler than, and obviously more successful, so.
The game for next year is actually, um, uh, sort of like that one. Instead, it's a frisbee disc game, so we'll be, we'll be flinging those this year.
So you'll be flinging, you'll actually be flinging something.
Yeah, actually, we've already started our flywheel prototypes, um, for intaking.
There's a net that looks exactly like frisbee golf, so we'll see you out on the range if anyone wants to.
Okay, so it's kind of like can jam, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Pretty much, yeah.
Get it in the slot.
Awesome and fantastic. The last thing I would just say, um, uh, quickly to, to Dan and Anusri, uh, you know, I just know that they just announced valedictorian and salutatorian. Uh, so congratulations on that. I know you're off to Georgia Tech, I went to college in Atlanta, so you will absolutely love it. Uh, it is amazing, um, come back home, but, uh, Atlanta's a tough draw. Um, awesome job to all of you. Uh, Ms. Picard?
Yeah, two, um, I hope, quick questions. One for Dr. Gilligan. Um, do we still have, um, in community programs, something, um, at the middle school and elementary level? And, um, secondly, Mr. Motherway, is there anything you need from school committee, um, to support this work?
Open, open mic. Seriously, the program runs pretty well, I guess, to continue to support. Um, the, the eight to ten teams that compete every year are, it's a combination of club and class. And then some, these are in, some are in both, right? They're in club and class. You mentioned being pelted with the balls. Um, they're all graduated, all engineers. Two now are design engineers for Amazon Robotics. Wow. Very good.
Yeah, judge and test.
Yeah, they actually, they came back and met with us about, uh, robot design, so that was really cool. They came back and were like, oh, we think this would look good, blah, 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 do this, do this, you know?
Yeah, I, I guess, um, helping to facilitate at the middle school and later elementary, the program running. I know, uh, Mr. Ando left a few years ago to go teach at, at, in another school in electrical.
Right.
I think he was the champion of the cause at the middle school. Uh, and then Mr. Miller, uh, took over as a parent, helping out after that. And then, um, it sort of faded after that, because there was not a, um, champion of the cause. So maybe, uh, you know, if there's a way to work at, at that aspect, then you keep the middle school program running. I notice a big difference when skilled, um, middle schoolers come up to the high school. They have a huge head start on kids that are just starting. Um, so, you know, to develop a team that makes it to Worlds, they've been at it for a few years. The, getting pelted with the, uh, with the, with the balls, those kids were together since they were in, in middle school and, and, you know, and worked up through the years and developed that team every year. So they get better at programming, better at refining their solutions. Um, so, so I guess, you know, if you can do something, that would be that.
Awesome, thank you.
And they're always looking for volunteer judges at the competitions. Is an opportunity for that. I mean, this is an amazing group. I would just say that I think that's most exciting. You know, we do have some programming at the younger grades, but what I think's most exciting is, at school committee, we used to have a lot more students in for these types of presentations. Uh, and with COVID, um, you know, that was limited, really limited. And your passion, excitement tonight has got me really excited. And I was wondering if the chair and I could get a picture with you guys, so we could put it on the website.
Yeah, absolutely.
Our celebrities.
Yeah, we watched it a couple of years ago on the robotics. End of the year party.
You can look in the middle, we'll look cooler.
Oh, wait, let's do the other shot.
Yeah, let's pump it up.
Smile, guys, on TV.
Well, yeah.
I almost picked you up and went up the street a little bit.
Oh, yeah, I was, I thought it was going to go down. Oh, I can stand up.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, yeah, thank, thank you all very much for having us. Uh, we'll be back next year to shoot some frisbees at you, right? Hopefully more hardware.
Hopefully you're back next year as world champions, so.
All right.
Dr. Gilligan, you answered the question about, um, community programs, I didn't hear it.
Greg did.
Yeah, we do have some, uh, programs, community programs. I don't have the specifics off the top of my head, but it's, uh, would be really easy to get. We do offer programming.
Thank you very much, have a good night.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And I, they're not going to stay for school choice. Um, Mr. McDevitt, um, I've got a, do you want, value of a couple of minutes? Can I keep going on the report, or do you want to get ready for school choice?
Uh, so we do have a school choice, uh, which is an, uh, open hearing, meeting within a hearing, uh, scheduled to start at eight. So I would just ask Dr. Gilligan, I think it's seven fifty-eight or so, do you think you're?
Okay, so, um, I just want to say that I met with the PTO presidents recently, and I wanted to just give a shout out to Peter Breen. He's, uh, made several donations of, uh, to the schools with mulch. They're all under a thousand dollars, so they do not have to come through the school committee. But Peter Breen's been doing this for decades with no fanfare, he doesn't look for any publicity. He's very humble, uh, and we really appreciate Peter Breen donating all that mulch at schools. Um, Anusri and Dan Middleman, Anusri, um, Chit Netti, uh, they are, Dan is the valedictorian, and Anusri's the salutatorian, and I'm really looking forward to, it's our first time back at Lenzies in Drake it on this Wednesday with the Merrimack Valley Superintendent's Association. There's Foddy Schools there, and they will be honored, and I can't wait to go there. Um, really exciting. Um, in an effort to support, um, the Joseph M. Herman Youth Center and that Night to Shine, I offered up superintendent for the day, and I had, uh, two students on Friday. Um, I had Devlin and Mark Hents, a fifth grader at Kittredge and a seventh grader at the middle school. And boy, did we pack quite a bit in from visiting the police station, the town manager's office. If you go on my Twitter account, you can take a look at all of those different things. Uh, May eleventh at NAMs was Geography Night with Mr. Poria, a legendary night. It was great to have that back in person. And, uh, I do have the health report and one other quick update.
Why don't we do those after the public hearing, if that's all right? Because there may be questions on the health update.
Absolutely.
All right, okay. So, uh, if the committee would indulge us, uh, just based off timing, we're going to go ahead to old business, uh, nine A, which is the public hearing regarding school choice. And I'm just going to kind of find the right place here. So just so that the public is aware, um, we, um, we have a public hearing, which is basically an opportunity for, um, people in the community to speak. It is a separate meeting, um, kind of a meeting within a meeting, uh, because the public is invited and able to participate and speak at this. We are going to leave this meeting and go into another meeting, uh, for that. So, um, I don't think we need to, I'm just double checking here. I don't think we have to move to go into this. Ms. Picard, are you still there? Don't think we move to go into it.
I don't know that you can hear me.
We can hear you.
Okay, but my camera doesn't seem to be working. Um, and I don't know if that's because I'm still in the other meeting.
It may be.
We have to open the public hearing, I think.
We can see you now.
We can see you now, but we don't have to move to go into it.
We don't?
Do we have to move to go into the public hearing?
I think we do, and I think we need to move, we need, I think we need to move to open the public hearing, and we need to move to close the public hearing.
Okay, all right. So I would entertain a motion to, I think you sounds right. Um, to, I would entertain a motion to move into, uh, public hearing regarding school choice participation for the twenty to, twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three school year. My goodness. All right, motion made by Ms. Petrowski, seconded by Mr. Hicks. Is there any discussion on moving into public hearing? Hearing none, seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote, uh, Ms. Picard?
Yes.
Ms. Wietzke?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Ms. Ms. Petrowski?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Five oh, we are going to move into public hearing for the school choice participation. All right, so we are in that meeting now, correct?
Correct.
Dr. Merely, right? So anyone can join and participate. It looks like there are two, but I think that that is us and Ms. Picard. I see two, two participants.
It's the CAM meeting and, and Ms. Picard.
Okay.
I, I did have to admit, um, North Andover CAM, so if anybody's trying to get in, I can admit them.
Okay, so we are going to stay here for a couple of minutes, just to be sure that the public has an opportunity to do that. Um, if you are following along and wish to join, um, on our agenda, which is on northandoverpublicschools.com, uh, there's a section for the school committee and then a, um, link to all of our agendas, if you didn't have it emailed to you, um, you can click on that and you can be there. Dr. Gilligan, can you just, uh, I know we've got some information here, but kind of summarize quickly, um, why we, uh, what school choice is?
I thought you might ask that. Typically, I don't think we've ever had anyone participate in this public hearing in all the years we've done it. But the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education requires that each year, school committees, after holding a public hearing, consider whether the district will participate as a receiving district in the school choice program during the upcoming year. And districts must notify DESA the decision regarding school choice by June first. Um, so in North Andover, the superintendents and our team's recommendation is, we do not wish to participate in school choice, as we know from our capital improvement plan, um, and facilities master plan two. And, uh, operating budgets over the years, we've made a real effort to, uh, decrease class size. Um, and we have had very large class sizes. And, um, you know, at this time, uh, we recommend North Andover not participate as a receiving school. I will say that a question came up last time, you know, do you have to be a receiving school in order for a student of North Andover to attend another district of school choice? And you do not. Um, you know, the, anyone in the Commonwealth who's a student in a town, whether they participate in school choice or not, can look to see what available openings are in communities. Some communities have all grade levels open, some have, um, specific, depending on enrollment, and if, some have a certain amount of seats. Um, and if there's more people that want to do choice in a community that offers choice, then the seats, they hold a lottery. So, um, that's really a summary of school choice. And I'll, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
While we wait for the public to join, if there is any, um, are there any questions from the committee? Ms. Picard?
Yeah, last time we talked about, um, was it possible to limit it to specific, um, grades on specific years? Did you get an answer on that?
Yep, so, um, you can, um, if you do participate in school choice, you can limit it to what you have available as a community if you do participate, um, and that's by seat, or how many seats?
And so a student who comes one year isn't necessarily, um, going to be allowed to come the following year, because it would depend on, um, where we had openings, if we had openings each year.
If you, if, if, if North Andover ever, if we participated in school choice, um, that is true.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the committee? All right. I don't know how long we've been here. I'm going to say we've probably been here five minutes or so?
About four or five minutes.
Four or five minutes?
I think it was like eight oh two or eight oh three when we logged on.
All right. If it's okay with the committee, we'll go another minute or so, just to see if there is anyone who's willing. Uh, it looks like, Ms. Picard, you may be able to see if somebody's requesting to join. We cannot, okay.
Yeah, no one is at this point. The only one that did was North Andover CAM.
Okay. We'll give it another moment.
I'm also periodically looking at the email, um, to see if anybody's emailing us saying, like, I can't get into the meeting for some reason. Uh, but I think the fact that our, our room is open, and if people want to come into the room, um, they could have come into the room, um, as well as being in contact with us. Um, so I, I would think that we can probably, I would move to close the public hearing.
Uh, I'm going to pause on that for one moment, because not all the members of the committee are in the room right now, Ms. Picard, so, um.
Then I'm going to go across the room and get my glasses.
Okay, all right. We still have a quorum. We have a quorum in the room still, all right. All right, it looks like everyone is back. Still no request to join, Ms. Picard? Okay, so Ms. Picard, Ms. Picard had made a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second on that? Sorry, I had notes on the wrong, different page there. Um, so Ms. Picard made the motion, uh, seconded by Mr. Hicks. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll go remotely, Ms. Picard?
Yes.
Ms. Wietzke?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Ms. Petrowski?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. We are back from our public hearing. So now our agenda item, we're just going to kind of finish it all the way through here, is the motion, which is nine B. Second reading and vote on school choice. Sorry, lost my page, there we go. which is 9B. Second reading and vote on school choice. Sorry, lost my page. There we go. So as Dr. Gilligan explained, we have to vote by June 1st regarding our school choice participation, and there is a recommended motion in the packet. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
So motion made by Ms. Witzke, seconded by Ms. Petrowski. Any additional discussion or questions? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll go roll call vote virtually. Ms. Picard?
Yes.
Ms. Witzke?
Yes.
Can I get clarification? A yes vote is, yes, we are not participating?
The recommended action is the committee vote to not participate. So a yes vote is that we are not participating.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry.
Yes.
Does that change your vote?
It does not.
All right, sorry. Ms. Witzke?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Ms. Petrowski?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Five oh, we will not participate in school choice this year. Okay. Back up to regular business, I just wanted to be respectful of the time that we anticipated, which was about eight o'clock. Dr. Gilligan, you want to kind of finish the tail end of your report?
I do. Just so two brief things. I guess it's like almost famous. This summer, when we ran the Acceleration Academies before the state decided to help fund those, we did get a call from Governor Baker and Jeff Riley, and heard about the good work and the structure set up in North Andover. They were going to come and visit. And the day of, they canceled, if you recall. And I wanted to say also, that just the other day, I got an email from, you know, the United States Department of Education Deputy Director, that she was going to come out and visit, because we were identified by DESE as a community doing tremendous work this year in terms of recovery, and they were going to come out with Jeff Riley this Wednesday. But I was informed over the weekend that they would be canceling too, because Commissioner Cadona was, I guess, in Lowell, and they were not going to send two of their top folks to the same state within the same week. But I just thought it was worth mentioning. Oftentimes, these high-profile folks can cancel at the last minute. But that's quite an honor to have the second charge of the United States. Whole DOE scheduled to come out, even though it was canceled. And same with last summer. So just really good work, I think, Lorraine and her team, particularly around the February and April work, and last summer, and throughout the course of the year. So having said that, I think the last thing on the superintendent's report was the health update. And Dr. Merly, do you want to project that, please? And I'll be, I'll present that tonight. So the health update for today, the good news is, I think, when we get to the next chart, you'll see, I think last time we were here, or last week, we were up around 77, 78. And so we had talked about, on the DPH call, the Mass DPH call, they were hoping to see it stop to trend downward. And that's exactly what's happened with us right now. So we're down at 44. So we're excited about that. As you can see, I think, so the week of 512 to 518, we were at 77 for the week. And, you know, so we're down significantly. I think that's good news. I hope it continues to trend in that direction. And then last but not least, we have the vaccination rates for the, we have students across the district and the vaccination rates. And this is a typical report. I do know that, you know, they will, you know, when we meet this week as the COVID Task Force, we'll talk about, you know, other offerings for, you know, possibly partnering up for that fourth booster for folks who are eligible. I mean, the fourth, the second booster, along with students, you know, moving forward. But overall, I think that this was positive this week to see that decline.
Any questions on the health update for Dr. Gilligan? So the only question that I got from somebody in, actually a neighbor, who has a child who will be registering for kindergarten, and students who are five and up are eligible for that. So do we have any plans to do somewhat return-to-school vaccination clinics for students who may wish to have them? There is no requirement, of course, but just to make it available as students perhaps come back to school?
Yeah, absolutely. We will, we will look at that on our agenda. I think that, you know, I think a lot of the folks who were going to get vaccinated, in particular age groups, were vaccinated, but certainly moving forward, will have probably an opportunity to do so. I mean, with right now, there's plenty of vaccines, and that would be a great opportunity if we could partner again through the Board of Health.
Okay, awesome. Okay. Any other questions for Dr. Gilligan on the superintendent's update?
It's interesting to see that the AB ECC has a higher vaccination rate than the, than Thompson and Atkinson. It's just a, it's just a, just a general comment.
So I think part of that, I'm not entirely sure, only a certain number of students at the AB ECC are even eligible.
So that would be as of their eligible students, then?
So that would be kindergarten only. Any of the other, pre-K students would not even be eligible. So I'm curious, we've got 431 there. I'm just curious that, it's a good question, that 248, which is 55%, is that of the five-year-old and above?
Certainly something we could check on. I mean, Cheryl is at our next meeting.
Yeah, just an observation that I just, you know, I can see, you know, Atkinson and Thompson have had the lower numbers right along. It just was, I just, like, hey, but the AB ECC has a higher percentage rate, just seemed a little interesting.
I'm also wondering, Dr. Gilligan, I know I could look back through the older packets, but do you know off the top of your head, has there been any movement in the percentages over the past couple of weeks?
For vaccination?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd have to check, I'll have to check with Cheryl on that.
I feel like they've been pretty stagnant.
Pretty stagnant, I think.
Yeah, I mean, again, I think that, you know, if anyone knows anyone that's 50 or above that can, can get the second, second booster, right? You can click on any website, CBS, any day. There are appointments every year. So I think that there will be more of an opportunity. I think as Mr. McDevitt said, I think, you know, as we have students entering school, and it's completely voluntary, we'll certainly provide the opportunity and get the word out. But, you know, we even looked at, we were on location at those schools, and it didn't have a ton of great participation, so.
I've been reading that having healthcare providers who have the same primary language as those that are being given information about vaccination is very helpful. So it makes me wonder if we might find somebody from Greater Lawrence Family Health, for example, to provide, you know, either an online session or an in-person session for our families to learn more about the vaccine. We are encouraging the vaccine, as far as I understand. You know, and perhaps our family liaisons could do some work around this as well.
Yeah, and they already have. I mean, we've had the family liaisons with Greater Lawrence Family Health at the clinic doing outreach. You know, so it's, you know, particularly Greater Lawrence Family Health has been terrific, you know, that, for whatever particular reason, you know, some folks choose not to be vaccinated. Or, you know, I think particularly at elementary, you know, although you see these different numbers, I have spoke to a lot of parents, and, you know, it's typically, there are some folks that want to do it, but they're taking a more wait-and-see approach, to say, like, okay, in this first round, we're not going to do it, but, you know, we'll consider it in the, in the, you know, next time or around, or see how it went with friends or neighbors or family. So good suggestions and things that we've already done with our bilingual parent liaisons, but we'll continue to do. And it's always at the start of the school year, there's excitement around this. So we could probably do something this summer.
Awesome. All right. All right. So we're going to move ahead to the chair's report. I'm going to be relatively brief tonight. So the main thing is really just a quick update from town meeting. I think, obviously, we were all there. I think a good number of the community was there, not necessarily to vote on any budget things. That stuff was pretty quick, pretty unanimous. But really, just want to take an opportunity to thank the community for their support in terms of the operating budget. There's a tremendous amount of work that went into it. Lot of back and forth with Dr. Gilligan and town manager Melissa Murphy Rodriguez, Select Boyd Fincom, lots of presentations that were done on all of that. And this is the largest increase that we have seen in, I don't even know, decades regarding the schools. Largest increase ever? I don't know.
We don't want to give away all the good news in the superintendent's evaluation, but that is true.
Okay, all right, okay.
No, Andrew, I just would highlight, you're 100% right. You know, typically, if, you know, level services is 3%, and we get 3.5%, you know, that might be $300,000 for new initiatives.
Right.
So at the 5.34%, this is remarkable.
Yep.
And much needed.
So again, huge thanks to the community for that. Another piece that I think we really need to thank the community for is the capital plan. So if we think back to, I don't even know, probably Holly, maybe a year and a half ago, starting with the facilities and the space subcommittee that you were chair of with, with Dr. Merly, just tremendous amount of work in terms of, you know, what did we need? How do we try to move forward? Petitioning for MSBA funding, moving forward with that, getting the funding for Kittredge in the first try ever. I mean, truly remarkable. I think we applied four times now, maybe five for the middle, four?
It was the fifth time.
This was the fifth time, you know, for Kittredge to get it done, the first, first time out of the gate, not even a review. And for the town to kind of support the plan and the process, I think, you know, we saw the success of Facilities Master Plan 1, and that we can do this on a facility, on a school facility side, I think is truly remarkable. And again, you know, I really want to thank Holly for starting to lead that charge and to push that through. And Dr. Merly, I know you, you spent countless hours and a number of road shows kind of answering questions, but I think people saw the need. They heard from the both of you and the committee members on what those needs were. And again, pretty unanimous for that. So couldn't be more thrilled to, I do love Kittredge, but I couldn't be more thrilled to see a new, I want to look over there and not see the sunset, or the clouds over there, and see a brand-new school that will house about 450 students. So I may not be in this seat, but, or in this room, but I do want to look over there and see that when that happens. So truly thank you to the town. I don't know of many communities that put together a plan like this, and have two massive initiatives for school buildings, and then followed up by the work that we have as a town and a community ahead of us. So it's a good time to be in North Andover. It's pretty exciting. And huge thanks to everyone for that. So Dr. Merly is just going to recap quickly. In case you haven't seen what the plan is, we're not going to bore us with the details, but I do want to make sure that the, the presentation is updated, and I know he has done that kind of going forward. And we'll start talking about design once we start meeting with him, I think after the 1st of July 1.
Correct.
Did I say your thunder?
So, no, pretty much, it's what now. Just as a reminder, you know, these are about building conditions, education delivery, and building capacity for the future, and impact and class size. The two projects that were approved at town meeting were the middle school and the renovation, and addition to the middle school, and a new Kittredge. They're, they're different. The middle school, as I said, is a renovation in addition. We're going to add some additional classrooms. The design phase will tell us where exactly. The initial look at this was that the courtyard's a possibility. As you can see in this phased illustration, the number one, the orange, would be a proposed two-story building in the existing courtyard. But the design firm will come in and solicit feedback from the school and from the community, provide options. I actually just spoke with them this morning. So they'll provide the different options and the pros and cons, like we did with the different options for the different projects, and pick one. And then the Kittredge is part of the MSBA process, as Mr. McDevitt was saying. So that's a different process. But again, the initial possibility would be a building such as this, which would hide the sunset from this room, if it was built as you see here. The number one in orange would be the first phase. We would move students into there. And then the two, you see, the pink area, would be, the existing would come down. And then the three is the existing modular and gym. And then four would be the final phase, in this case, where it would be the administrative offices and the, the entrance to the building. So the expected timeline, what you can expect to see coming forward now until next March, the design firm will work with the community, and the school building community, committee has to be put together. One question that has to be answered is, will it be one school building committee for both projects, or a school building committee for each? So we'll answer that question. But they make the decisions as we move forward. We would anticipate that that would be done in time for next town meeting, so that next year in May, we are voting for the construction funds for the middle school project, in which case, the construction would start next summer. And then Kittredge is a longer timeline, because it's part of MSBA. The first thing you have to do, you have to follow their process, but you have to do a feasibility study. And that takes a year. And you're not really, we're not due to queue in to start design until next year, anyway, with them. They have to kind of pace it so that the funds are available for all projects. And so that will happen over the course of this year, and then next year will be design. And what they do with design and project management is, they provide you with a, usually three, names of project managers that have been approved by the MSBA. You get to pick from that list. And they're with you through the whole project. And then the design firm, they provide you a list of three, and you get to vet them, and then pick one of those. And then best-case scenario would be not next summer, but the following summer that we would start construction. It could be the following summer after that. But probably August of '25 or '26, we're looking at starting to, to move students around and have some things done over there.
Any questions for Dr. Merly? All right.
Yes, one clarifying question, sir. For Kittredge, is there any moment where we have to go back to the, to town meeting for approval to move forward with anything?
So in both cases, we have only approved design.
Right. I know with, with middle school, we will.
For, for both.
For both, we will have to go back.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep. And it's true for all, and that's how we've done. We did Facilities Master Plan 1, and two is the same. One year is design. The design is done. The estimate for the construction costs come from that, and that's what's approved the following year.
All right. We'll jump ahead now to.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yeah, oh, sorry. I didn't see your hand up there.
Yep, I have four questions. My first question is, Dr. Merly, have we already contracted a design firm for NAMs?
So the firm that did the options for us and the feasibilities, I mean, the assessments, MVG, that contract included the design of this first project, the middle school project. So they are already on board.
Terrific. My next question is, we continue to refer to the subcommittee, but to my understanding, the work of the subcommittee is complete. And I don't know what the process is, Mr. McDevitt, to like decommission the subcommittee or retire the subcommittee.
Yeah, I wasn't referring to the subcommittee as if they were still working. I was thanking them for their work.
Absolutely. Our website still refers to the subcommittee, and there have been some other references to the subcommittee. So I just, I don't know if there's a formal process to, to terminate a subcommittee or.
I'll look into it. Yep, let me look into it.
Okay. When you mentioned admin offices that will be at Kittredge, I wonder, does our central office have all the space it needs and that we anticipate for admin, or whether that should be taken into consideration, adding some district-wide administrative space at Kittredge in that, in that final phase? I know it's very early to be talking about that, but it, but it occurred to me, and I think we should think about that. I don't know if there's sufficient meeting space, or other needs that we may have for community programs or something else, where it's so closely located, it might be helpful to do that.
So it's an excellent question. We do, as we move forward with all of these projects, we'll include the question of what are our district-wide needs that could be met with this particular project, whether it's Kittredge, the middle school, or the other elementary schools. We're always looking at the possibility, would it be better if this particular office was at a school rather than central office? Or are there other central office needs that we can't meet in this building? So we're always looking at district-wide needs in addition to the specific school project.
Thank you for doing that. And then my last comment or suggestion is that. Thank you for doing that. And then my last comment or suggestion is that in everything that we communicate this year, that we include the information that it is anticipated that these two construction projects, the middle school and the Kittredge School, are going to be able to be done within the levy, and that we're not going to be looking for overrides. There's no override required for these two construction projects.
That's correct.
Thank you.
That has been our communication.
I just, I don't see that in the, in the updated expected timeline. You know, I just think that it's really important that we emphasize that over and over again. Because once somebody gets the idea to, to communicate something that's not accurate, that's hard to, to get in front of. So if we stay in front of it, I think that will help us.
I will admit that I consciously had been including that leading up to town meeting. We got approval, and I was taking a break from reminding people of that, anticipating we would certainly be doing so going forward, especially leading up to approval for construction.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. I think we're good there. So we're going to move on to nine C, which is a second reading and vote of the transportation contract extension. It's about halfway, a little more than halfway through the packet here. So we had some, I think Dr. Merely's presenting it. I think we had some questions last week that, or two weeks ago that Dr. Merely was able to answer. Are there any questions right now? All right. So I would entertain a motion.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Is the contract available online to us, Dr. Merely?
I don't think we have that contract. We don't usually have the vendor contracts online, but we can certainly get that to you.
Thank you.
So it entertain a motion regarding the transportation contract extension with NRT.
I would make a motion that we move to approve the transportation contract extension with NRT as presented in the packet.
Motion made by Ms. Petrowski. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Witsky. Any discussion, questions, comments? Okay. Hearing none, seeing none. I'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Picard?
Yes.
Ms. Witsky?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Ms. Petrowski?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, 5-0. We have extended the contract with NRT Bus Incorporated. All right. 10A is the first reading of the student handbook. We left this in the agenda. We had an opportunity where we could have perhaps stricken this from the agenda, but I do just want to share, we do not have this back from legal counsel at this point. I think as you guys know, attorney, or town council attorney Egan, she left, I think about a week or so ago, perhaps a little bit longer. And so it is just being completed and reviewed by legal. So I do anticipate that we may have that at our next meeting or meeting after that. We want to make sure it is vetted. So, all right. Dr. Gilligan, you want to walk us through the school physician appointment?
Yes, certainly. In our next meeting, we will have Cheryl Barzak here, and we'll have Dr. Chan. But this is the first reading on the appointment of-
The annual appointment, which you do every year, of the school physician, Dr. Kenny Chan, who I think you've probably seen more this year than we've seen in, well, the past couple of years than we typically see in a year. And it's at the annual cost of $6,300. It's, ever since he's been here, it's been $6,300. So, you know, really, that's extensive. There's no action required at this time. But we do appreciate Dr. Chan, particularly during these, since, particularly since March of 2020, participating in these meetings.
Any questions for Dr. Gilligan regarding the appointment of school physician Dr. Chan?
Yes.
Dr. Gilligan, for all those watching at home, could you just give us like a three-sentence version of the role that Dr. Chan plays?
Yeah, so Dr. Chan's a member of COVID Task Force. He's a part of the advisory health group that we'll talk about the wellness policy next. He provides advice on all sorts of, you know, medical issues, or, you know, over the years, it hasn't been just COVID, it's been flu, it's been the norovirus, NAMsBola.
NAMsBola.
Yeah. And then on top of it, you know, and Cheryl can have the more technical details, but just in terms of, you know, some of the prescriptions, some of the different things. You know, it's really important that we're up to date and follow the precise direction and advice he gives us.
I, I think one thing I would just quickly add, and Cheryl and Dr. Chan can specifically speak to it, but I don't think that any of our school nurses can administer any medicine over counter or prescription unless we have a school physician on board. So, okay.
Well done. Including, I believe, sunscreen fits that.
Yeah, I think ironically sunscreen as well. So, all right. Funny as that is. Okay. First reading of the wellness policy. Dr. Gilligan.
Okay. So, School Committee Policy ADF states in part that the Health Advisory Council will review on an annual basis, a yearly basis. After review of the district's policy, they are not recommending any revisions to the Policy ADF for FY23. And Ms. Barzak will be here along with Dr. Chan next time, if you have any specifics, if you want to take a look at the policy. It is included, and it is a few pages in the packet.
Yep. Okay. Any questions at this point that we want to have ready for next meeting? It looks like Ms. Picard, you have a question?
Yeah, maybe perhaps more of a comment. The wellness policy really addresses nutrition, physical activity, food safety, particularly with regards to allergies. This was written when my now 26-year-old was probably a six-year-old. And I happened to have bumped into one of the people that was instrumental in getting this together. At that time in North Andover, we didn't have an SEL program or, or mental health wellness, healthy relationship wellness, those other aspects. I don't know if we would want to make any reference to mental health and, and social emotional wellness in this, or if we want to keep it as it is. But I feel like to call it a wellness policy, perhaps we would want to call it a physical wellness policy, or, I've just been thinking about that. A lot's changed in the 20 years since we, we started doing this. If it's been in fact 20 years, we could certainly see when it was initially adopted.
All right. We can try to get some clarification on that.
Be happy to do so, Helen. And I think you write a lot of this, when you look at the legal references and the cross references, it's around child nutrition, WIC.
Yep.
Yeah, so it was, it was 2012 that it was initially, it was updated in 2012. So I really wonder, you know, the discernment of this committee, if we would want to see any changes to reflect our social-
It says it was updated in 2017.
It was.
No, I was saying initially.
Yeah, it, I guess it doesn't have the date. It was originally enacted. So, okay.
Can I just ask for some clarification on number three, where it says, "A healthy school environment will be supported. Use of food as part of a curriculum activity may be considered if it is essential to the curriculum and safe for all students involved, including those with life-threatening food allergies." How is it determined if it's essential to the curriculum? And I know that's kind of like a big question. I just know as a parent of a child with life-threatening food allergies, some of the instances were a little tough to navigate. And I had a couple of conversations, I think actually even a few years ago, I had written into superintendent's office asking about it, because it just made life for a child with food allergies really challenging. So I'm just wondering how they consider it essential. And it, or can we have that conversation a little bit, just because?
I mean, we could have Cheryl talk about it, but it's, it's actually changed. It's, the principal works with Cheryl's office, you know, and they have that discussion. I also have a son with life-threatening tree nut, bee, you name it, allergies, everything possible. So it is something that, you know, would be discussed with the principal at the school, worked out with, also Cheryl, approval of the school nurse. But it really took the place of, if you remember, previously, I think we allowed three food type events a year. And this really takes into account the responsibility of health and safety, number one, and knowing the school. You know, I, I think that, you know, food's an integral part of some things. But we've certainly, I think, seen less and less food in schools over time. And it's principals work with Cheryl to see if it can be done.
Yeah, for sure. I know, I remember when the no celebration food came out, and I was probably the only parent cheering, because it was always something else that I just had to make sure that, you know, we were making sure it was safe for everybody. But then I think particularly in the sixth grade and then through the middle school, there were some, some of the classes were just, and I totally get why it's fun and exciting to include food in the curriculum, but it's also exclusive for some of the kids. So I just wanted to put that out there. Something for me.
Yeah, I don't see much, as much-
It's not, it's not nearly as much as it used to be.
Yeah, we don't see it.
Yeah.
I would just like to echo Ms. Picard's ideas about making sure we update this to be as inclusive of mental health as possible. I would also like to add in that I think we have an opportunity to make it inclusive of gender-affirming health education as well. It talks a lot about nutrition and physical activity, but I think that is also part of making sure that students are well. So if we could, in potentially maybe updating it, not for this year, but for next year, like go through a review process, include those two things would be great. I'd also like to highlight that, I know it's hard, but one of the things that it does say is that using, on the third page under physical activity is withholding physical activity as a punishment, or in lieu of completing other academic work is strongly discouraged, as I have a child who sometimes struggles to behave well at recess. Just keep in mind that recess is a really necessary thing for a lot of our youngsters, and being creative in, in helping students to deal with some of those struggles is important. But, yeah.
Get the energy out.
Yeah.
Joe, so, yeah, this goes back to, I think, six superintendents ago. I think Jim Merely tackled this at first, and he had just become a principal. And oftentimes, kids, you know, where they'd say, "You have to stay in recess to do your work that you've missed," are the ones that needed recess the most. And I'd also say, if you take a look at our school committee policies, and they're broken down by lots of sections. I know there are certain things required by law, and I know we cover a lot of other things, but I think duly noted for the record good points, and something we can certainly look at.
I, I'm not saying it's being done, but just to keep in mind that that is a, it's a necessity for a lot of our kids.
I may have been one of those kids who wrote, "I will not talk in class."
A lot.
Many, many sheets of paper, all through elementary school. So I can appreciate that. All right. Okay. I think we have some questions and some feedback as we kind of go through. You know, there isn't a requirement that we have this updated by a specific date, is there?
Yeah, this is just the first read. We, we bring it through.
It's, yeah, it's just an annual review.
It's an annual review. So there isn't, there isn't necessarily a rush that this is done for next meeting. So if we need to spend more time on it to, I think some of the things that you brought up in terms of mental health and things of that nature, you know, are not going to get done perhaps in one meeting. So there, there isn't a require, and you said, you know, next year or something, but, you know, we, we can spend some appropriate time on it.
Yeah, I think if like, if we have to like approve or move forward with this for the next school year, that's one thing. But then in, since it's an annual review, it'd be nice to think about how we go about-
Absolutely.
-updating it to be as accurate and current and relevant as possible.
Yep.
And my-
How does it work in con-
My recollection of why it became required for annual review, we have many policies that we do not review annually, or really hardly ever. And this was, this came through with an annual review because there are so many families that have life-threatening food allergies, that, that we need to be reminded a lot that we can be unintentionally exclusive.
I actually think that it's prohibited in Massachusetts to keep a kid in for recess. I feel like I looked that up for a client a few months ago.
Yeah, so if it's not, if it's not prohibited by law, it's encouraged by DESE, and it's, it's, you know, it's not something we want to do.
DESE prohibits it, doesn't it though? I feel like it's really strong, but language-
Yeah, it could be very strong language, or they may prohibit. But I do know it was a, when I enacted that as principal, it was a challenge at first for some folks that it was something that they, it was a practice in, in some places I don't-
A little bit of a mind shift.
Yeah. You guys can definitely coordinate that later. I see Mr. Hicks's eyes sparkling there, so.
As a parent, I appreciate that shift, Mr. Gilligan, Dr. Gilligan.
Yeah, I mean, I made that shift back in 2008, and we also moved recess before lunch. So, you know, it was good to get the kids moving around. I mean, yeah, recess before lunch, get, and then come in and eat. So, different things.
All right. Dr. Gilligan, the evidence for the superintendent end-of-year evaluation and review.
Yeah, I mean, so there's quite a bit here. There's quite a bit to take in. I will say that my experience of being in central office since 2012 and watching this process is that it's often a very quick turnaround time with myself and my predecessor or the other folks that have been here. You've sometimes had this night, and, you know, you have a couple of days to get something back into bed, or now Michelle, you know. So it will be for our next meeting. After we present tonight, I'm going to highlight some really key highlights on this. You can take some time. If you have any questions, you can certainly get them to the chair or Michelle, and that can bring for next time as well. And then after this, Chair McDevitt will work with Michelle to send out a link in the upcoming days to a form to fill out. And, you know, Chair McDevitt will manage that process as well. So, guys, I'm thrilled to present tonight. I have to say that I am really humbled and honored and feel fortunate to lead this district, that we have a tremendous team here. We have tremendous staff members. I think that I can't thank you enough for your support this year. In some ways, you know, I think coming into this year, a lot of folks said, "Hey, we're totally back to normal." And in a lot of ways, I personally believe, and there's some studies out there by the NEA District Administration, different places, that this has been one of the hardest years in education in the United States, in the history of the United States. And so I feel fortunate, because here in North Andover, our staff, they show up each and every day and just keep showing up. And they have grit, they have grace, and under very difficult circumstances. We started the year under very different circumstances than we are even now. And I would just highlight that we have been in a pandemic this year, and we have had, you know, many meetings about masks and about safety. And it just was a few short months ago that we were up over 300 cases in January. So, you know, I point those things out because they are significant, because number one is the health and safety of our students. So I'm really honored to lead. So despite the, being a really challenging year, on the opening page, I really wanted to highlight some things that really go to the goals. And before I highlight some of these things and expand upon them, I do appreciate here in North Andover that we have worked together to have shared goals, the school committee and the superintendent, to have superintendent goals, and then the school committee sets a goal. But we were really laser-focused this year. And goal one was to collaborate with municipal officials, engage residents to ensure appropriate and adequate educational facilities and funding in the future to decrease class size and better meet the needs of students. Goal two was to ongoing discussion with district and school-based teams. We'll continue to identify and address unfinished learning resulting from the myriad of challenges of the various teaching and learning models employed during COVID-19 pandemic. Goal three, for the 2021 school year, the district will support a district-wide commitment to social justice and equity for all students and staff. We'll continue, the district will continue working to create a culture that reflects, respects, and embraces the voices, perspectives, and differences arising from our diverse community. And then last but not least, the school committee had a goal of communicating, engaging with the community to advocate for the district with residents and town leadership. And certainly you have done that this year. But really to go back to that first page, what I wanted to pull out of all of these goals is some of the real significant work that's been done. Because, you know, again, being a very challenging year, not just here, but in Massachusetts, in New England, and in the United States, we've accomplished remarkable things, and we've only done so by working together as a team of collaborating, of doing our best to support teachers, to support families, to support students, to work in the community and develop partnerships. And I think those things have been remarkable. And- And Mr. McDevitt, you might have stole a little bit of my thunder earlier, but, you know, working with the town manager, we meet every week, uh, every week, we meet every Tuesday and, um, working together. We adopted an approved budget that provides the additional support needed for our students and staff as we continue to navigate the effects of COVID-19. But these positions included much-needed positions that we just have not been able to add for years. You know, across the district, we added three social workers and counselors across all levels, a school psychologist, seven classroom teachers, special educators, math and literacy coaches to support staff, parent bilingual parent liaisons for community outreach, you know, and the list is even longer. But I think what's remarkable is to have a relationship with the town, to have the school committee have a relationship with the finance committee and the select board, for us to come together and say, it's time. It's time to fund our schools. It's time to put positions in that we need for our kids, not just for COVID-19 and their desperately needed, these positions were needed beforehand. And so, you know, a 5.34% represents, um, you know, last year, when the town manager with that relationship gave us free cash for recovery services, just a little over $2 million was in staffing. And this 5.34% represents about 1.2 million, 1.19 of staffing for this year. And we're covering about another mil, a little over $1 million, $40,000 with ESSA, you know? So as we progress next year, a similar increase is now going to put all these positions with some adjustments based on, you know, our long-term plan and need, but it's putting these positions in the budget in perpetuity. And if anything, I can't think of a time when this has happened in the town in North Andover for like 24 years here. And it's, it's a testament to this group here, it's a testament to our leadership team, it's a testament to what Jim does. And I think through collaboration, we're proven that we can do great things in this community. So I think that that's really special. Andrew said it earlier, on March 2nd, we were accepted into the Massachusetts School Building Authorities Program to build a new Kittredge School with approximately 50% reimbursement. You know, what that does, to take the burden off the taxpayers and then for us to use for other projects is remarkable. That's on top of all of the projects and facilities master plan two will have no tax impact for the residents of this community for the first five years, the next five years. I am telling you to get into the queue, to be accepted. Typically takes community seven or eight times if they get in at all. And so to be accepted on this first time is, that is testament to, you know, the folks here that participated in the walkthroughs and all those things, but also, you know, the school capacity group that did all that work in facility planning to outline like what our needs are. I mean, it's, those reports are still valuable, tremendous, but to have a project be accepted and get that 50% is remarkable. I think what also is remarkable is North Andover has not only been accepted, but we're showing that we're responsible and we are ready for these projects. Town meeting approved the capital improvement plan, which included the facilities master plan two. And again, each year is mutually exclusive. So, you know, a lot of folks, a lot of education had to be done around, like each year we have to go back and vote on the different aspects of the project. But as part of the, the facilities master plan two, um, funding was provided for the designs of both the middle school addition and the Kittredge School replacement. There was also an additional article passed that put aside $2.7 million into the stable capital, stabilization cap, capital stabilization fund. Like the town's saying, we are ready, we have the finances, and that will be used for feasibility study to be done in the next steps, um, once we have a to-be-formed school building committee, um, which, which I just think is remarkable. You know, I think some other really remarkable work is, I, I've had the pleasure to be able to, you know, working with facing history in ourselves to introduce the topics each month that we're doing professional development with the entire staff of the middle school and the high school. And really working with them to support our ongoing commitment to social justice and equity for all students and staff has been tremendously important. You know, through this PD, our teachers, and this has been for teacher growth, is to look at historical analysis combined with the, you know, study of human behavior. Facing history in ourselves has helped us heighten staff's understanding of racism, religious intelligence, and prejudice, and how that impacts student outcomes or the history of time. And it's very powerful work. And I couldn't be more proud of, you know, Lorraine for really, and team and all of us working together to do that. And, you know, I think another key highlight is, I just can't, you know, maybe this line could have beefed it up a little more, but hosted, you know, we hosted COVID-19 vaccination clinics and provided test kits to students and staff throughout the year. You know, I just can't say enough about the team, and that's everyone participating. That's parents keeping kids home from when they're sick. It was about hand washing, it was about distancing, it was about all the tumultuous times that we had throughout the course of this year. It's about ever-changing guidelines, it was about the Delta variant, it was about Omicron. It was the state letting us know on New Year's Eve at 10:00 PM that they were going to roll out, um, you know, testing kits for teachers to get on Sunday before they come back and New Year's Eve was a Friday. It was about Jim Merely, you know, going down to pick up the, the kits. It was about, you know, us getting central office people and their wives and family in here because the state said we had to then split them up because we couldn't, we didn't have enough to give, you know, a package of two to everybody along with masks. It was about teamwork, it was about keeping people safe, and it was about being out on the Sunday before we returned with, you know, Marcy's there and Lorraine and Cheryl Bazak and Jim and it's like a pouring rain, freezing cold, and we really wanted to make sure that we had folks to keep them safe. And at that time, that was really important. You know, I think last week was Nurses Week and, um, again, I just, along with the parents and our staff and our kids, you know, doing all the right things, uh, they did a remarkable job this year really to do that. And one thing that I forgot to mention earlier is that kind of when you put all this together, I think the most exciting thing is that we have a unified plan that, you know, there's not a lot of suburban districts that probably have a staffing plan that we came up with multi-year, a few years back that's unadjusted. But to combine a plan for the operational needs and tie it into a plan for the facilities master plan two and our capital projects and for them to go hand in hand, I think Dr. Merely said it in a meeting a little while back, like, this is remarkable because, you know, when Jim said it, I don't know when you said it, Jim, but you're like, I'm going to tell you in a second. You said to me one day at lunch and then you repeated it here. You said, "I had this realization. I was thinking about this and I said, this is really going to happen." And I think about all the years with cuts, I think about all the years, you know, with overcrowding, and I think about just even the progress we've made on like elementary class size to date. We've taken, you know, even the smaller increases in the past years to put our resources to the greatest need. And, you know, I'm really looking forward to a, a really good future here in North Andover. There is quite a list here, I know there's a lot to go through, but I, I really think that, you know, these key highlights really highlight, you know, the, the progress we're making towards these goals. And I wanted to share that with you tonight.
All right. So I, I think before we kind of just open it up here just a little bit, I, I think the point of looking at this and what's here is really if, as we start to discuss, if there's additional information that I think the committee needs or is going to request of Dr. Gilligan, and then we'll start the evaluation process subsequent to that. It used to be that we got the very scripted kind of guide from the state in terms of the evaluation. That is, there is still a guide, but it is not because you're not in the third year. It is not the entry.
Yeah, you'll get, you'll get a traditional form that's more the DESE standards.
Right.
Along with pieces around these goals and.
But we had a specific one because you were in first year, second year, third year of the superintendent, right?
Well, there were some things that were definitely included in that. There's some slight adjustments, but this is standard, we'll have the standard DESE form and then there'll be some other components. So it'll be more similar than dissimilar, Andrew, than last year.
Okay. And then the other thing I'm just going to kind of point out, which is a little bit of the obvious here, but people always kind of talk about the review and the evaluation of the superintendent. And I do just want to just remind people, ourselves included, no one else that I know of other than a superintendent has their review on camera, in public, with everybody being able to watch and listen. I know I've given a gazillion reviews and had a gazillion myself professionally and I've never had more than one other person on the other end of the phone or the room or whatever. And so I think any town official who, who does this is, um, it's, it's an interesting place to be. So, uh, I would just ask, uh, you know, I don't know if everybody has kind of read through all of it, but are there additional documents that you may need or questions that you have for Dr. Gilligan recognizing that we're going to do the actual evaluation in a subsequent meeting? So, Ms. Picard?
I sent a couple of questions to Dr. Gilligan today and I'm sure he'll have an opportunity to respond.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Viti?
No questions.
Mr. Hicks? You're just first round, so, first time doing this, so.
I would love, Dr. Gilligan, any additional information in regards to goal three and end-of-cycle evidence is the NAPS racial, ethnic diversity committee? Like just any, it doesn't have a link there, so anything that's been, what has the, what work been in those regards?
Sure.
Thank you.
Ms. Picard?
I'm not sure if it's mentioned somewhere else specifically where you, just in your summary, you said you hosted COVID-19 vaccination clinics and provided test kits. And I don't know if you could get the amounts, if that would be a pain, but that would be something I think that you might want to highlight is how many vaccination clinics throughout the district? I mean, that's a big task, you know, we're like, so I think that might be something if it's not too much, um, if it's easily accessible. And then the test kits, I don't know if that would be accessible, it must be, there must be a record of it somewhere, but it's a, it's just, I think people should know that. And because this is all public, everyone can hear and, and, and everyone should know.
Thank you.
It's a lot.
Yeah. I, I think the only thing that I would add, and it's not, I think the best place for it may be in four, I think, but I know you usually have some evidence in terms of presence in schools, classes, all of that. So, um, you know, just, um, I, I think being a superintendent, you know, there, there's an awful lot, but I think being visible in our schools with students, with faculty and staff is absolutely important as well. So I don't know if you have that, uh, it wasn't specifically something that was there, but if you have maybe even, you know, a month that you can kind of pull and present out, I think that, that would be helpful for me.
Absolutely. It's, um, it's my greatest part of the week when I get into the schools and I, I can tell you, I might even put my Twitter link in there. I mean, sometimes that's my best way I document some of these things, but I got to say after, it's been a real joy to also be able to go to, you know, the geography nights and to, you know, see some of the plays and the softball games and the tracks. Thank you, Andrew.
And I think Dr. Merely actually highlighted in there, um, you know, it's, it's certainly at school events and meetings, um, but, you know, just visiting, visiting and being visible. And I think it's important, again, students, faculty, and staff know who you are and not, who is that guy walking down the hallway, so.
Isn't that our goal though? Isn't that under our goal for us to be attending school events?
No.
Well, you had said under number four, that says school committee goal.
School committee goal for Dr.
No, that's that, well, it's the school committee goal. I have, I, you know, that, that you guys said annually, but I don't want to be as presumptuous as to put the information I did last year up front. You guys, I could fill it with all of your information because I've been keeping track of that. But Andrew, um, in terms of some, in terms of the other goals about engaging in those things, I can certainly find a spot in my goals to fit those in.
Right.
I think that was included in the past, Andrew, because that was one of the entry goals that we had for Dr. Gilligan was to be present in the, you know, in the public eye.
Yeah, Holly may be right. You may have just linked in, you know, some of our goals as well.
Yeah, this is.
For us and in theory. Okay.
Yeah, this is the one, I, I, Andrew, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention that. This is the one school-specific goal that we voted on, a school committee goal that you guys vote on.
Right, that we would do these things as a committee.
Every year. But I also think there's an opportunity, Andrew, to provide in, in those other goals, you know, whether it's just some of the things, places I've been.
You used to have it.
Yeah.
You, you did absolutely have it because I remember.
Well, visibility was a goal. And then you guys said, well, I think that, you know, we could have a different goal, you know.
We changed, yeah, we changed our goals.
The goals change each year. You know, and I think in the past, we were starting to creep up, you know, it started with, my predecessor would have this about four goals, including a school committee to share in one. But then we started to creep up to seven or eight goals. And so each year we've evolved. But I can find a spot, Andrew, in my goals as well. And I can also list in the documentation that we keep track of, of all the other things because a lot of it's similar, tons of crossover.
Sure.
Okay.
A quick question, Mr. McDevitt. What's the process going forward from here now?
So we will have an opportunity to, to continue conversations on this and then there will be an evaluation form that is sent. It'll, I'll send it out to you, you guys will complete it, I will compile it, and then we will officially discuss that on, on camera, on pub, in public, the, the evaluation.
Is that at the June 9th meeting or the, the one after?
Well, good question. I will not be here for the other one, so that may be on, that may be on the 9th or that may be, I'm sorry?
That's our next meeting.
Yeah, that may be our next meeting or it could be without me.
Yep.
And at the evaluation, do we also then, or is this a separate process in deter, uh, the determination of future goals?
That is a second, yeah, second phase, basically. Yep, perfect.
It's like in the summer?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the next meeting, Mr. McDevitt, he'll, he'll send out the links for you guys will complete the forms and, yep, then we'll come back.
So just to clarify, we're anticipating that we're going to need to fill out the superintendent evaluation before June 9th?
If I'm going to be present, then yes.
I think it would be best.
And that's consistent with the process we've used for over a decade.
Yep.
So between now and the next meeting, we'll be getting those forms?
Yes.
Okay. It might be helpful, Mr. McDevitt, for the new members to see the evaluation from the prior year. I know they can look it up, but perhaps Michelle could send it so they could see what it looks like when it's all compiled?
Yeah, we can have her send both, one as an artifact and two as a working document for them.
Thank you.
Perfect. All righty. All right, moving forward, last item, I think, on the agenda, first reading of the student activity accounts here. Dr. Merely, do you want to present that? While you're pulling that up, the question that I would have for you is that it says recommended fiscal year, 23 student activities as presented. I'm not thinking you're wanting a motion tonight, you're just, the wording of that makes me think that you are, but this is a first reading.
First reading, correct.
Okay, so there will be no motion on this, but I think.
The, the outcome is to ask for approval.
Yep. Okay. You weren't asking us from a time perspective to suspend the rules or anything?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. All right.
So this is an annual need that the school committee approve, the student activity accounts. What you've been provided are the existing student activity accounts. I have confirmed with those who oversee, see these, that the ones that have zero balance are still needed or are felt that they will still be needed going forward. But the class of 2019, 2020, and 21 have all been closed. The funds, each class contributes to a class gift and then any remaining funds go to the class treasurer and all of that has been completed for those years. So when you approve this, you will not be approving those class. So when you approve this, you will not be approving those class accounts because they have been closed out.
Any questions from the committee? Ms. Picard?
Yeah. Dr. Neely, there are some accounts that have had like no movement in the last year. Do you, do you come to some point in time where maybe they haven't had movement in a few years and then you close out those accounts? I assume you review these accounts regularly to determine if they need to be in place, but yeah, that's my question. If there's no movement, what, what happens?
You're exactly right. And that's what we do each year prior to it coming to you, is we look at those that have zero to begin with and zero to end and ask, is this still something that we may be in need of? And the advisors to these groups have all confirmed that they believe there will still be some activity in this. But if that continues, we'll, we'll maybe push a little harder if nothing is happening and drop them off if, if that's required.
Well, some of them that aren't necessarily zero, like the, the second line down, account number 50, started out at 46, 46, 22, ended at 46, 46, 22. Working balance, 46, 46, 22. So there's no, it appears there was no activity this entire year. So I would have to go back and look at prior years to see if there was activity in prior years, but like what's up with, with that account? What's up with that 46, 46?
Okay.
Isn't this just a month from May 1st to May 31st?
Well, it's, that's as of May, not just May.
The beginning balance in May, year-to-date payable, ending balance, working balance.
Yeah, I'll confirm that that's not just the beginning of the year, but it wouldn't be unusual. You know, we use the, we could revolving account first, so it, it could certainly be that we never got to the student activity account for any particular need, but we can look at that.
Other questions from the committee?
Well, I noticed that, that looks like the middle school robotics has some funds in there, so. In light of our presentation, and that we said that there wasn't kind of somebody to spearhead it. So are these, I should know this, but I don't, I'm sorry. Are these funds used to, what are they used for?
So student activity accounts are specifically for that activity.
Right.
Whatever club it might be, the robotics in, in particular, and for the proper functioning of that activity.
So not for like a student advi, or a teacher advisor position?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
So this would be like if a club fundraised and had some money, or something was donated, you know, to, to one of them?
And so if I'm looking through and just seeing that like girls lacrosse seems to do a really nice job fundraising, but the boys swim team does not, like what, I, I, I'm just, I'm just curious like what the goals are for, like, do you know what I mean? Like, so for, for instance, like some sports fundraise, some sports don't. Where does it go? Why?
Yeah.
And then we're paying, and at the high school, we're paying for each sport. So it's just a.
Some are more active than others. You know, some might fundraise in order to provide end-of-year jackets or, or something like that. It just depends on the group.
And sometimes teams will fundraise one year and not the next. So that has happened as well, I think. The only kind of like odd question that I have is, I mean, there are, I think, two accounts. It's not an awful lot of money, but two accounts in the negative. So when do they have to be positive? By end of year?
By the end of the year.
Okay, so somebody's going to have to rectify that. Okay. And then I know that, you know, we've done an awful lot of work on fundraising and how those, you know, to piggyback a little bit on Ms. Petrowski's kind of statement. Will we get an end-of-the-year report on fundraising? I know we've gotten them by season, basically. But I think it would be good to look at the spring season and then the entire year as well. Because, you know, I, I think there are definitely some teams that are doing some significant fundraising and other teams that are not, it'd be helpful to understand that a little bit.
Yep.
Yeah, because it's not always clear as the parent or the participant what the fundraising is for. So if we had some clarification, I think that would be helpful. Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions? Anything else Dr. Neely needs to prepare for next meeting? All right. We do not have public, so I will just quickly ask if there are any member comments before we adjourn for a hopefully quick executive session. Ms. Picard?
Yes, first of all, I lament that Stan Limbird is not with us. He would have been thrilled with everything that happens here tonight. Second, I look forward to seeing some of you at the Memorial Day Parade that gathers on the Common at 10 o'clock on Monday. It, it's really very meaningful for, for our veterans and our families of, of active duty of military to have a good turnout. And third, I really want to say on the record how grateful I am to the work of Suzanne Egan, our, our shared council. I really feel it changed how school committee does business. I feel like it changed the relationship between the schools and the town. Suzanne Egan would often say like, I'm not sure why you're saying that, like we're one community. There was a town in North, time in North Andover when, when we were not so united, and I feel like she was really helpful in that. But I also remember that there was a time in school committee when they would have legal questions and be like, oh, I don't know, should we ask? That's a lot of money. And our, our budgets were so tight at the time. You know, I think that sometimes errors could be made when school committee hesitated to reach council. And Suzanne was so available for any questions that we had as committees and subcommittees. And, you know, I think we were all very reasonable with her, but I'm looking forward to the new person that's going to be replacing her, helping us in the future. Really congratulate her. She's gone on to, I believe Gloucester, where she's going to have a staff working with her. So I think it's a great move for her, but I'm really thankful for the work she did.
Thank you. Ms. Vitsky?
No comments, thanks.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes, because when we meet again on June 9th, it'll be too late, but Pride Month is next month. And in celebration of that, last year, select board create, recognized that Pride Month exists every year in North Andover. And in celebration of that, we'll have a pride flag raising ceremony again this year on June 2nd at 5:00 PM. And love to see everybody there.
Same thing on the night, on the day of our next meeting is Special Olympics, so I just want to remind everybody here. And community who's listening. Rain date, the 10th.
Versus crosstown rivals, Andover.
Yes, yes. South Andover. Ms. Petrowski?
I just wanted to share that on the 12th, was that last week? The weeks are all blending together. I was able to participate in a strategic planning focus group at the Stevens Memorial Library as they are moving forward with their plans. And it was a really interesting and engaging conversation, brainstorming session. Stan Limbird was there and recruited me. And so I just wanted to share that I believe there is a survey that they are going to put together, that they are going to want the community to participate in as much as possible. The conversation was really, I, I guess, I want to say inspiring, but that's not quite the right word, of just how engaging our community is and how the library, they are hoping to just kind of make the hub and the central location of the town. So it was really exciting to be part of that. And then I guess look out for the survey that's coming and participate when it comes out.
Awesome. And I, I would just say quickly, you know, we will meet, we, we will actually gather on June 3rd for graduation and then we'll meet a little bit after, but there's a tremendous amount of activities that are coming up for our seniors. And I know we've been invited to a number of them. North Andover has a pretty unique tradition of the grand march where the, where the kids, you know, get announced and, and leave for prom. So that is March 31st. I'm sorry, May 31st. I know that a number of community members, you know, definitely love to kind of come and see the kids get dressed up. And, you know, my summer fund counselor, you know, is, is wearing a tux or a dress and, and the kids get a kick out of it. Scholarship night, I think is June 1st.
Scholarship night's the 31st.
31st. Do I have reversed?
Prom is the 1st.
Ah, they're reversed.
The grand march will be at 5:00 PM.
5:00 PM. And then graduation at Wall Stadium, which I believe starts at 6:30 or 6, 6 o'clock. I should know this, but I don't. I think it's at 6:00. And so just a huge congratulations to the class of 2022. It's, it's nice to be returning to a number of normal type of things, so fantastic. All right. With that being said, I would entertain a motion to adjourn regular session and to enter into executive session pursuant with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, 21A, to conduct strategy regarding non-union personnel contract negotiations, negotiations with no return to regular session. So is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Petrowski.
Second.
Second by Ms. Vitsky. Any discussion? Seeing none, hearing none. We'll start virtually. Ms. Picard?
Yes.
Ms. Vitsky?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Ms. Petrowski?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. We are adjourned from regular session at, it looks like 9:21. And we will go into executive.